Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
And for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the August 25th Meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Summer's almost over and it hasn't even really started yet. Okay, Lori has the dog for today. He's a special dog. She's gonna carry him around.
Jack, let me pick him up and carry him. Her, her. It's a female. We've got a little beagle here from our dog pound and she's very cute, very nice disposition, good personality. She'd make somebody a wonderful pet. So come on down to our dog kennel. You could take her home. And pick her up on Saturday, she'll be available after 3 o'clock. If you like, you can check out our website and see what kind of dogs we... Are we full, Jack?
No.
No, we're not full, but I'm sure we have plenty to pick from. So come down to our dog kennel and make your family very happy.
A thought for today: You may give without loving, but you cannot love without giving. Thank you. I have a proclamation today for Ron Twining, our Assistant County Administrator, who's retiring August 31st. And I guess that would mean this is his last official meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. He's overjoyed, but I'm not. He's leaving us. He's leaving us and we're gonna miss him a whole lot. In the matter of expressing our best wishes to Ronald F. Twining on his retirement from the Lorraine County Commissioners' office. Whereas Ron Twining announced his retirement from his position as Assistant County Administrator on August 31st, whereas Ron began his employment from Lorraine County, for Lorraine County, in 1980... I don't think that's right, is it? It says it's 1980?
Valentine's Day.
As a planner with the County Planning Commission, okay. And whereas Ron took a job with the Lorraine County Metropolitan Park District as a park planner from 1983 to 86, and then moved on to the city of Oberlin from 86 to 1997, working as interim city manager and community service director. And whereas county commissioners hired Ron on May 11th, 1998, as Planner 3 under the Community Development Department, one of the best decisions I ever made. Whereas Ron was promoted several times, beginning September 14th, 1998, as Acting Director of Community Development, and on December 21st, 1998, as Director of Community Development, and then June 18th, 2007, as Assistant County Administrator. And whereas we are recognizing his 15 years of service with the county. And whereas Ron has served on many boards, such as the Law Library Resource Board, Natural Resource Advisory Council, the Port Authority, County Recycling Revolving Loan Review Fund, Tax Increment Finance, Tax Incentive Review County, CIC, Workforce Development Board, OSU Extension Advisory, and various county land use committees. And we wonder how he got his other job done. Whereas his good fellowship and congenial sense of humor with working associates has been enjoyable and will truly be missed. Whereas Ron is a caring, very cooperative, dependable worker who will pitch in wherever help is needed, and all his untiring efforts, dedication, and humanitarian kindness will be long remembered. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners expresses appreciation to Ron Twining for services rendered to the county and its citizens. Further be it resolved, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and staff wish for Ron, his wife Cindy, and his children and granddaughter a very healthy, peaceful retirement as he pursues his hobbies and interests for many years to come. We are really gonna miss you, Ron. I think Jim's gonna miss you even more.
Commissioner, if I may, you typically ask potential retirees if they'd like to say a few words, and I would like to say a few words.
I would like to.
As we start that, I've got Lisa handing out some small tokens to all of you for my appreciation, and I want to assure you, they're all valued at less than $75. I do appreciate the proclamation and it will be cherished. And unlike many other retirees, I will take advantage of the offer to speak. As I start, I remember that the Gettysburg Address was 280 words long, was written by hand by President Lincoln while riding a train from Washington DC to Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. He then edited the address while waiting to deliver it. I wish I could be so succinct. I have five points I would like to...
Sorry. I took it out.
If you put it down, it rolls. Stick it back in the box, you'll be okay. The first point I would like to make is I want to thank all previous employers for not prohibiting...
Keep your dog quiet, please.
For not prohibiting beards in the workplace. While it's an unusual comment, there were bosses in the 80s that politely asked that I shave, starting this beard on September 9th, 1974, the same day I was honorably discharged from the US Army. But times are different than they were in the 80s. When I started with government, I did not have a computer. We had onion skin paper, and if you were lucky, you had an electronic typewriter. I honestly remember the day, and it felt like a promotion, one of the better promotions I've ever received in government, but I honestly remember the day that I was given a used hand-me-down electric Selectmatic typewriter. It was heaven. At the bottom of most business letters, we still type CC colon. However, only a few of our younger employees have ever seen an actual carbon copy. I have faith that the future political correctness will necessitate placing PC colon at the bottom for photocopy. Second point, I'm glad to have never been important enough in 30 years to have been assigned my own parking space. I'm happy that assigned spots are for other departments and their employees. Most people know that they can find my car on the third level of the parking deck in spot 49. The secret is, if you get here early enough, you can park anywhere you want. Third point, through the years, I've received many words of wisdom concerning life. I thought today would be a good time to offer some of these pearls to the audience. Some are good, some are not. You can decide which. The first was from my father as I started employment. He said, "Remember one thing: Only you sleep with your conscience." Dick McGinnis, on my first day of employment on Valentine's Day, 1980, said, "Never forget that all jobs are trainable and that no job is ever done better than the job nobody wants completed." One suggestion was to never claim to be an expert, for X was a former or has-been and a spurt is a drip under pressure. Perhaps the most philosophical message came later, when one of my new bosses said, "Remember, it's always the second mouse that gets the cheese." During a critical goal-setting session, and I will say it was my tenure at Oberlin, we were told, "Set your goals high. When you realize you're not going to meet them, lower your standards." My favorite came from an incoming city manager when she said, "Never forget: Some days you're the pigeon, some days you're the statue." Now, Mr. Cortez has offered several gems through the years. Jim, that will be remaining between us. I will suggest that it is easier and safer to cite other people. I would suggest that to the younger employees, find a quotation early in your career and try to live by it. I would like to share with you the words from an unknown Maine townsman that has served as my beacon over the 30 years. It's a poem called "Which Am I?", I'm sure many of you have heard it. "I watched them tear a building down, a gang of men in a busy town. With a ho-heave-ho and a lusty yell, they swung a beam and the sidewall fell. I asked the foreman, 'Are these men skilled? Men you'd hire if you wanted to build?'" He gave a laugh and said, "No, indeed, just common labor is all I need. I can easily reckon a day or two what builders have taken a year to do." I thought to myself as I walked away, "Which of these roles have I to play? Measuring life with rule and square, shaping my deeds to a well-made plan, patiently doing the best I can? Or am I a wrecker who walks the town content with the labor of tearing down?" Finally, through the years, I have been asked to prepare comments for numerous events in a wide variety of presenters. But this time, I took keyboard and paper to say, "What a gift it has been working on behalf of the residents of Lorraine County. Thanks to all of you for your kindness through parts of four decades. It has been my pleasure to work with each and every one of you." My advice is, if I may, find a location you love, a group of people you respect, show up early, leave late, dress aptly, and try to make the residents' life better than you found it. If you do those things, it won't feel like work at all. Thank you for letting me be a part of Lorraine County history.
I'm afraid what's in here.
Oh, you need to.
I do?
Yeah.
Thanks.
A red hat.
Uh-oh. Oh, my gosh.
You got candy that you're not allowed to eat?
I got candy. No, this is real. I can eat this. Sugar-free. Ron and I share sugar together, so.
Okay. And I have the laughing dog. Thank you, Ron.
That's darling. You can come back next week with gifts if you want.
And, you know, if you give me back the foil on top, I'll reuse it.
Recycling, yes.
Okay, well, now that we've done the fun stuff.
Go right into the presentation, Commissioner.
Yeah, if I get there. Let me see, okay. Do you want Betty Halliburton first, or do you want... No, she's gonna have to go. Brian McCartney, Katie McCartney, implementing a stormwater district. You're on.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Karen.
I want to thank the Commissioners for taking the time to continue the discussion regarding the Lorraine County Stormwater Utility. As you remember, in November 09, the resolution was passed to move forward with said stormwater utility. Shortly thereafter, our consultant, K.E. McCartney &amp; Associates, in conjunction with Environmental Rate Consultants, were hired to take the necessary measures to enact the utility. We are now at the next step of the implementation process, and that is approving the 17 billing policies along with the business plan for the utility. It needs to be clearly understood that before we can begin the public information process, which includes meetings, flyers, et cetera, we need to have the billing policies and business plan approved by the Commissioners, so we would ask that you act on this issue today if possible. So with that, I want to introduce Brian McCartney, President of K.E. McCartney &amp; Associates, to start the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Board, for taking the time to listen to us today, and also I want to kind of step through the implementation process now that we're at that next level. And I want to give you, first of all, before we really get into the billing policies and get into the nuts and bolts of this whole stormwater utility, I want to refresh your memories on the reason we're here and why this utility needs to be implemented. Then when I'm done with that, ERC will be up and they'll get into the billing policy and the business plan for the utility. So what are the challenges that stormwater creates for Lorraine County? They include unfunded and mandated Ohio EPA Phase II water quality regulations. These are not going to go away. They're only going to increase year in and year out, so if we're not prepared to face them and take care of them, it's going to be handled in a different way with penalties and more cost in the future. So it's something that just has to be taken care of. It's gotta be faced now. The environmental issues that we're all concerned with, water pollution, flooding, drainage challenges. We have flooding issues. We need retention, detention facilities. We need to look at regional aspects for that. EPA requires that we remove stormwater from our sanitary systems. This is INI reduction. And finally, but the most important, is the lack of dedicated funding source to handle these issues. In the past, when stormwater issues have come up, counties such as Lorraine Counties and counties across the state have been able to use general fund money to handle those issues. The reality is that today, in today's economy, that the local governments, cities, and counties can no longer do that. So more and more of them are faced with these challenges or implementing stormwater utilities. To kind of get into the actual requirements, the EPA Phase II requirements fall on the county and seven of the county's townships at this time. And I say "at this time" because I'm sure down the road, more townships will be added to these requirements. But currently, Amherst, Carlisle, Columbia, Eden, Illyria, Grafton, Sheffield, and the county are faced with meeting all these regulations. And we want this utility to help these townships, as well as the county, to face these regulations and take care of them and implement the process. What are the minimum control measures that the EPA is mandating? They include public education outreach, going to schools, educating our kids, flyers, possibly commercials airing on the local stations prior to even airing this show, the meetings. Public participation involvement, having volunteer programs where volunteers go out and clean our waterways. Elusive discharge detection and elimination. Finding where all of our septic system's outlet is just one of the challenges, as well as every other point source. Construction site runoff. While there's construction taking place, it's important that we control it in a temporary manner, that we keep the sediment from entering our waterways along with that pollution. And then when that construction's completed, it's important that we permanently maintain and take care of stormwater, not only as to quantity but quality. And then pollution prevention and good housekeeping, just what we can do in-house to help our water systems with rain gardens, cisterns, any other option that might be available, just basic good housekeeping. Obviously, the flooding and drainage problems, as development occurs and more impervious areas are added, the water flows quicker and it inundates our water systems and causes flooding. So that's the simple definition of it. And how do you handle it? By reducing that impact and by regional facilities and making sure that the facilities that are in place are actually working properly, but it takes money to do all this. Inflow and infiltration, stormwater, as it enters our sanitary systems, creates overflows. There's not a capacity in sanitary systems to handle stormwater. The overflows include sanitary waste that gets into our waterways and a very serious health issue, and EPA requires that we take this stormwater out of our sanitary systems. And the county should be given credit for attacking this already, going after federal stimulus money and getting 50%, a minimum of 50% of the INI reduction as required paid for. So this is already being attacked as we speak. With that, I'd like to introduce John D'Amico of Environmental Rate Consultants. He's going to get more into the business plan, the billing policies, more of the nuts and bolts of the utility itself. John?
Thank you, Brian. I'm John D'Amico, I'm President of Environmental Rate Consultants. What I'd like to do is give you a little background about our company, and I have my brother here, Al D'Amico, Vice President. We specialize in setting up stormwater utilities and stormwater districts. We've set up about 50 stormwater utilities and districts across the United States, and we've been involved in Ohio stormwater utilities, about 14 of them. We set up Hamilton County, Butler County, City of Columbus, City of Toledo, City of Milford. We've got about 14 in Ohio that we've worked with, and we're currently working with Lucas County. With that, I'll get on to the presentation. Brian has given a good overview of the stormwater challenges facing Lorraine County, and what I'd like to do is walk through the business plan that we worked with county staff to put together regarding your stormwater district. The stormwater district, under Ohio Revised Code 6117, counties can set up a stormwater district, and under that legal framework, they can assess residents for stormwater management. So the first step in the business plan is, the county has already set up that 6117 district, and the biggest benefit of that district, it establishes a dedicated funding source to meet all the challenges of stormwater management. The fee that we're working on or setting up for that district is based on what's contribution to runoff, and later on in the presentation, I'll address what that is. The district will send the bills out on the county auditor's bill in January and in July. We're not creating any new bureaucracy. We're going to use current county staff. Comprehensive watershed approach, EPA wants cities and counties to address stormwater in a watershed approach, and we're getting the county towards doing that. Our business plan is based on a defined level of service, which I'm going to walk through later on in the presentation, and a calculated cost of service. I've already mentioned other Ohio counties that have already set up ORC 6117 stormwater districts, or Butler County, Hamilton County, Lake County, Tromble, Warren, and the northeastern Ohio Sanitary District is in the process of setting up a stormwater fee for the counties that they serve. And there's more than 60 cities in the state of Ohio that have a stormwater charge in Some of the highlights of the business plan, we developed a two-year business plan. We identified the activities and responsibilities required to meet the Ohio EPA and PDS Phase II water quality regulations. Brian has gone through the drainage and flooding, the inflow and infiltration problems. We developed a two-year rate based on the two-year business plan. Again, the auditors can provide the billing, and the assumption is that we're going to begin billings in January 2011. Some of the billing system highlights or policies that we've created to date, we're treating gravel as impervious. Public roads are defined as part of the drainage system. US and Ohio EPA define roadways as part of the drainage system or a conveyance system, and you'll see why we're not going to actually charge roadways. We're just defining them as part of your stormwater system, as does federal EPA and Ohio EPA. Owners are going to get the bill, obviously, in the auditor's billing system. The owners get the bill, so we're not going to bill tenants for any of the stormwater. There's no exemptions. We're defining residential as single-family, duplexes, farms, and condominiums. And then non-residential includes all other land use categories, including tax exempt such as churches and schools. We're in the process of working on a credits program, and I'll talk about that here in a minute. And we're going to be using what's called the impervious area rate structure method, which I'll walk through here on the next slide. The impervious area rate structure method is used by about 90% of the stormwater utilities across the country. And basically, what that is again, is it's called based on contribution to runoff. That's been upheld in state courts across the United States. It's legally defensible. And what it is, it's based on the hard surface, the driveway, parking lot, rooftops of buildings of residential and commercial buildings. And again, the residential, a single-family, duplexes, agriculture, and condominiums. And what we're going to do with those land uses is assign one ERU, an equivalent residential unit, and then all others are going to be measured. We're currently finishing up measuring all of the parking lots and driveways, the hard surface of all the commercial buildings. I had mentioned that the residential, we're going to assign one flat rate or one ERU. ERU stands for Equivalent Residential Unit. What we did is we randomly generated 400 residential properties, and we measured the impervious area, the rooftop, the parking lots, or the driveways, at the homes. And on average, those 400 residential that we measured was determined at 6,000 square feet of impervious area for those residential. And then the non-residential, I mentioned, we're measuring all of the hard surfaces. And an example would be, let's say that there's a McDonald's, and we measured 12,000 square feet. You would divide that 12,000 by the 6,000, which is the residential, and then that commercial property, or say McDonald's, would pay two times that of a residential, and that's the concept. Here's just an example of a residential as part of the measurements that we use. You see that the driveway, both of the house and the garage are measured. And again, we did that for 400 residential properties to come up with that 6,000 square feet average. And then we have an example of a commercial and non-residential. You notice the measurements of the building, the parking lots, and we're not measuring the green space. That's not part of the charge. And then moving on, looking at the revenue side, the rate study and revenue analysis. Again, the rate is dependent on a defined level of service, and what that means is, if somebody decides to sue or challenge you, it will be upheld in courts. We're basing it on an actual level of service. Again, the credits will be offered where properties that implement green infrastructure or best management practices, BMPs, will be able to get a reduction in their charge. The initial fee has been determined to be $1.50 per month per residential. And then the commercial, as I said, depending on how many ERUs they have, multiples of ERUs, times 150 for the six months, and then appeared every six months on the auditor's tax bill. And at the $1.50, you'll generate about $600,000 approximately in annual revenues. And then the next two slides, exactly what we're going to be doing with that, approximately $600,000. There's $125,677 INI stimulus project loan reimbursement. There's $49,000 for EPA legal and administrative reimbursement. There's $169,000 for the implementation costs. $80,000 annually to meet the Ohio EPA and PDS Phase II water quality regulations. $35,000 annually for stormwater management infrastructure maintenance. $48,000 annually for ditch cleaning. $8,000 annually for street sweeping. And approximately $84,000 for water quality capital improvements, and that totals just about $600,000. And then year two really is basically the same list, except that the second bullet there from the bottom, $169,000, instead of the year one startup cost, is going to be used annually for floodplain management, design, and construction. So again, those are the first two years of the plan. We're working on the next years, three through five. And that concludes our presentation, and we thank you for allowing us to come today to present the business plan. And I guess at this point, we'll certainly entertain questions.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have questions?
No more comments than anything else. How far are we in...
How far are we in the INI already Ken? How far along? As we've started the project?
About thirty percent.
About thirty percent expected completion? All right. Melissa, Ken, come up here.
INI projects, about three million, half of that is loan, half of that is grant. The major portion of that project that's happening at this point is flushing the sewers twice. It's a small flush and a, and a clean flush so that the cameras can travel through all the linear footage of what we plan to re-line and rehabilitate. And presently, that's being done and probably, I would say thirty percent would be a reasonable figure of the total cost that's expended so far.
Okay. How far along? When do we expect the program to be done though with the INI?
Next year, August, three hundred days of the contract.
Three hundred days of the contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right then, thank you.
Majority of that television is coupled with engineering, so the decisions are made at the time it's televised to determine whether that joint would be replaced or lining would be installed.
Okay.
So there's major engineering occurring in the future.
Most of us don't understand what INI is. Most of us don't understand what it is, what you're going through to stop the infiltration.
Infiltration.
Stop infiltration.
Stormwater attacking the sanitary sewer system. This stops the stormwater from coming in, thus the concept of having that award for stormwater management. And that came through Obama and it really worked well and we were fortunate to get fifty percent grant. That's, that's a, that's a
Significant amount of money.
Pretty good accomplishment and I think our rate on our loans probably about three and a quarter. Thank you.
Jerry, did you want to comment?
Well, I just wanted to emphasize because I think it gets a little bit confusing, especially when we're talking about sewers and people kind of get, don't understand why the sewer and the stormwater things get mixed up. A lot of this has to do with, as John indicated, we have a dual responsibility to prevent stormwater from seeping into our sewer system and from the sewers, seeping out into the stormwater system. So even though fix is on the sewer system, it is related to stormwater management and it is mandated as indicated by EPA. So that's, that's why it is a stormwater management issue as opposed to a sewer assessment fee that we usually do with relation to sewers.
In the following years plan, year three through five, is that when we're going to start talking about doing the retention areas with the dollars to stop the waters from going?
Actually, year, actually year two is when we'll start talking about that. After we get all the implementation costs out of the way, all the upfront costs, then we'll start actually looking at the regional facilities in year two. So that was the one sixty-nine you see in year two, it's all set aside for regional facilities.
Okay. That was my question, the one sixty-nine, is that what it means, the actual retention areas? Or the start of retention areas? Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Anyone else have a question? All right. You've asked for action from this board.
Yes.
Who is she?
Scott.
Thank you.
We don't have, what is our action? Well, that's my question. We've, we've seen the documentation as the concept to approve what we've seen today so they can move forward.
I think our plan was to have some hearings, wasn't it, Brian?
Well, what we, what we were hoping to do is have approval of the billing policy and put the billing policies in the business plan so we can move forward with our public hearings.
Oh, you can't, they can't hear you, you have to come to the microphone.
What I anticipated would happen today was that we would receive approval from the board of the billing policies that you should have received and of the business plan. And then once you guys have approved that and everybody, we're all on the same page with how we're moving forward, then we can start our public hearings.
The billing plan to put it on the tax duplicate?
The billing policy that kind of outlines all the, defines how we're going to do our billing and there's seventeen billing policies and it should be summarized for you. And then I believe Ron has backup, he might not have it anymore. No, but
But those were the rates with the discounts, the one-third off based on what the impervious service were.
Yeah, it talks about all the different issues we might run into as we go through the billing.
Agricultural, commercial.
Right. And we want to make sure that we're all on the same page as far as these policies and the business plan before we start meeting with the public and saying this is what we're going to do. So we're asking for your support for those two items.
Okay. And Mr. Twining, that's all that information that you forwarded to us?
Yeah, that was in probably three or four different sets of emails and handouts. You have the large document, which is the backup that Brian refers to. You also have just the recommendations. The only thing that I'm not comfortable with or sure and may need some follow-up discussion is whether the authority stays with the sixty-one nineteen-year sanitary engineer or whether the authority of administering this collection as a utility can and should stay with Board of Commissioners and who they designate. Jerry and I have been working on that. I just want to point that out before you adopt something and haven't had that full discussion. I think Brian has presented information that says it, it shall be the sanitary engineer that works under the Board of Commissioners. I'm not sure from what I've read and I'm not an attorney, that you have to go as far as designate at this point, the sanitary engineer to administer that. I think it can stay with Board of Commissioners, but Mr. Innis may want to address that.
Jerry?
I would like to say something. We, that does need to be addressed and it is an issue and there should be definitely some discussion, but it's not what we're asking for today. What we're asking for today is the billing policies and the business plan and neither one of those designate who's going, going to be in charge, to my knowledge. So I just want to make you aware of that.
Is that accurate, Jerry?
That's, that's correct as to what we have. Right now, it's just the billing policy and the plan.
Okay. I'll move for approval of the billing policy and, and business plan as outlined.
I have a question.
No designation, sorry.
I'll make a second and then we'll discuss. I'll second.
Okay. Are you suggesting that we're going to look at like agricultural properties on a case-by-case basis if they've done some mediation to their property to make it more impervious? Are we going to look at that?
Yes, the, you're referring to what we're referring to as the credits program.
Right.
If, if a best management practice or green infrastructure is implemented on a property, certainly they, they may be approved for a credits program. We're just now in the process of starting what's called the credits program, but that is the intent, to offer reduction in your bill if you implement a green, green infrastructure or what's called in the industry, best management practices.
So, or like a commercial property, if they have a retention basin, they'll get a credit for that?
Yes, exactly. As, as long as it's operating, I mean, there'll, there'll be rules to follow, but the assumption that it's operating properly, then certainly a credit and that, and that's standard in the industry, especially for retention or detention. And that's probably the best example, but there's, there's quite a few. OD and our Ohio Department of Natural Resources is the, or the, is the manual that we're going to follow and they have all those types of best management practices that are approved for, for reduction.
So it'll be an automatic dollar fifty unless somebody comes, will they have to come to you and say, hey, I, I implemented this and?
Right, yeah. What is, again, we're, we're in the process of working it, but what, what we've normally done in Ohio and in, and honestly across the country is it's an application process, just a one-time application process. You submit your, your documents proving, let's say your example, the detention facility is operating correctly, the site planes are approved, the county engineer that reviews it and says, you know, verifies that it's working and then annually, then there's a one piece of paper just saying, you know, that, that the detention facility that we're receiving credit for is still operating properly. So just a one-time application and then a annual, you know, we promise that the, the facility is still working.
A free application?
Yes, correct. Yes, free, correct.
All right.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I, I would mention that the brochure that you received in your packet, that's supposed to be printed out in eight and a half by fourteen, so when you fold it up, fold it up, it, it's about the size of a, of an envelope, if you will. So that, that would be the intent and we've already received comments from Commissioner Blair and we appreciate that. So if there's any other comments, that's what Brian is referring to, that will set the stage then for the next phase of public education and letting the, the citizens know what, what the plans are. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Ms. Clark, we call the roll, please.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Carroll.
Aye.
Thank you all. The next item of business will be Betty Halliburton. It's number twenty-one under correspondence. We didn't know we were going to have the pleasure of her company today and this has to do with?
Yes, to our commissioners, thanks for the opportunity. The Lorain County Urban League has partnershiped with a group called Literacy Power Line and they are taking a symbolic scroll across the country to have one million people sign for literacy. We realize that literacy is one of the issues that we all have to deal with and it relates to so many different of the elements facing us in the community. And the Urban League, and I'd like to say my supervisor, Peter Obuji, who oversees the Education Department, I'm the education coordinator, has worked diligently to bring attention to literacy. So this seemed like the word, the perfect opportunity for us to participate this summer and we are actually been in town, the scroll has been in town for two days and we're running out of paper. So thanks Lorain County.
And Sharpies.
I tell you, we can't, we just, we are, we're always winners in so many ways. We have been really busy just to let you know about some of our literacy things that we've been doing. We believe in the concept from the cradle to college. We can't separate that because we realize we have to tackle literacy from all angles, including the family. So we've been doing family literacy nights, we've been doing parent workshops to help parents work with their children as well as several reading centers across Lorain County. We're very proud to partnership with a lot of our churches, Salvation Army, Boys and Girls Club, Harrison Cultural Center, Horizon at Wokes Villa and Westway Gardens, which is on Infirmary, I can never say that word, somebody say, say, Infirmary Road, only been in Lorain County in all my life. But we found out, we've done reading at lunch with the children at the free reading programs and found out that they are waiting for us to help them be good readers and we realize if they don't read, they can't succeed. So we thank you for the opportunity and we'd love to come back and share with, with you again about some of our other successes. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Betty. Before we begin the resolutions, I would just like to acknowledge Andy Vidra from Nowaka and Rob Burner, executive from Lorco and they have a brief comments to make to the board about change to a facility planning area. So whichever one of you wants to speak, come on down.
Thank you, Commissioners. I want to thank Andy for scheduling this meeting for the correct day since it, it really does, our project really does comply quite a bit with your stormwater issues. What we're looking for today is just a slight change to our facility planning area. We had a request from Lorain County Health Department on Royalton Road near, at the end, at the edge of Eaton Township for a resident that has a failing system and a failing system, home site system basically means that this system is, is polluting the environment. And as the Commissioners are aware, the major purpose and mission of Lorco is to address some of the problems that we have in Lorain County with failing home site treatment systems. And I'm happy to report though our system has not been without controversy, that is a major aspect of what our system will accomplish. What you're looking at today is, is simply an extension of a couple hundred feet of our line on Route eighty-two to the east in order to accommodate a home that has a failing home sewage treatment system. In order for us to connect to this home, we have to have a change in our facility planning area to do that and this is the process that we want to go, that we have to go through and that we are happy to go through to have those changes made so that we can accommodate that property and as a result, help improve our environment.
Questions?
Rob, question, yeah.
Yes.
It's three areas added by the drawing I have. How many residents affected?
Well, there, there really, it's, it's a clarification, the other area, the resident that we're talking about right now is one resident and one business and the resident, as I discussed, has requested this through the Health Department and actually the Commissioners have approved money for that resident for improvements so that, you know, they are a, a low-income individual home.
That was from our federal money earlier?
Yes, yes.
And the last year, first of yours, LMI for repair, okay.
That is correct and, and again, it was the recommendation of the Health Department that instead of putting a lot of money into a home sewage treatment system, it would be a whole lot easier for us to just extend our line and have them connected to a, a collection system.
Does that money transfer over to do that?
Well, again, that, that isn't something we administer. That, that is up to the Health Department and the Commissioners to transfer that money over.
That'll have to go back through our community development?
I believe so, but again, I, I can't comment on that Commissioner because our, our role is to simply put the line in at the house and everybody else has to handle that other funding stuff. The other areas, as you, as you mentioned, are really clarification areas. They're, they're creating the boundaries so that they line up with property boundaries and the area on Cowley Road has always been part of our plan. It's just that for whatever reason, reason over the years when the FPA was established, that line was kind of vague and so we wanted to clarify it so it, it now lines up with where the actual project is being built.
Great, Rob. Ron, I have a question. Who is handling that now for the Commissioners? Since Dan Gouche left, he worked real hard on that program last year and we weren't able to expend all the mics, we couldn't get enough applicants, but
Christina Zandarsik is doing that. That had a timeframe on it. I believe that's passed. We brought somebody else in real late and I don't know whether it's because of this Eaton Township resident or not. Bear in mind though, with our Formula program, we always put some home improvement money. So if they're income eligible, it's likely that they would be able to get the, the tap in and connection through the formula as long as funds are available. Now, there may be a slight lag depending on which year's funding, but I think the program through the Health Department and Dan Gouche has passed and sunsetted, but there are other federal funds that should be available.
Okay, so they might have qualified for this but didn't apply for it based on changing our FPA?
The fact that it was, yeah, it was time-sensitive. They applied to put in a home septic system. I'm guessing because the grant closed and we had to have all expenditures, that that was rejected by us, knowing that this request for a sewer line was the preferred treatment by the County Health Department and so we funded somebody else is what I'm speculating, but they would be eligible for a connection under the Formula Grant.
Okay. Rob, question for you. How soon will you meet this residence with your sewer? Give us a request.
I'm happy to report that we have acted on this relatively quickly. We got this request on August eighth and so we've done everything that we've can to facilitate it. Our sewer line, we should have extended this year and, and everything should go into service by the beginning of two thousand and eleven. So, you know, again, you know, our dates may not line up, so it may go into the next fiscal year for this particular homeowner, but with respect to being able to connect to our system, we're anticipating connections to begin right after, right at the beginning of two thousand and eleven.
Okay, so we have to have this resident redo an application process then? Are we going to contact that person then through our? Sorry to keep bouncing you guys back and forth, but I need different answers, so.
We'll contact that. I'll make sure that community development is aware of this, this need. The only risk that I can see and it's minute, if the property sells and somebody comes in before it's connected, that's not meeting the LMI, but as long as that property owner's there, it would either be out of the two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven funding cycle, so we should be in good shape.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. You got something, Andy?
I'll point out that I had provided the Commissioners with a map that indicates the properties that are to be affected. On the map, the, the red boundary is the, the current facility planning area boundary in gray are the, will be the new boundary. We are moving all of our boundaries to coincide with property boundaries. We, if you look at the, the existing boundary particularly toward, towards the northwest, there's lots of properties that are split by these boundaries which raises, you know, questions when, when the land is undergoing development, so we're trying now to make sure that everything gets aligned. The complexities in Lorain County where we have lots of large lots in areas that are possible to be sewed means that it's a slow, slow process, so we'll be back in, over the next year, year and a half, trying to iron out all of the other boundaries within the county. But, you know, what you have now is the beginning of that. The, the properties included are the ones that all front on the roadways that are being, that has a sewer line running on it. That's what you'll see included in this change. This will be presented to the Nowaka Board at its September tenth, two thousand and ten meeting. The Nowaka Water Quality Committee approved this change on technical grounds with a notation that it required consultation with the Commissioners prior to the with a notation that it required consultation with the Commissioners prior to the Nuwaka Board meeting.
Thank you.
Andy, if I may, I'm a little bit confused. I thought, I thought you already, Lorco's facility planning area was already in all of Eaton Township and all the unincorporated areas, other than like Columbia.
They're the designated management agency along with the county in all of the portions of those townships that are not in the Avon Lake Lorco Phase One Facility Planning Area Boundary.
Okay.
So in, in, within the Phase One area, Lorco in Lorain County is the lead agency. Outside that boundary and in the areas that we're now adding into this, the county and Lorco have joint responsibility.
So it just wasn't in the Phase One?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to take action? You want to think about it or make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the change of the FPA.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair? Aye. Ms. Kowski? Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, Madam Clerk, we will move on to the regular order of business.
Under Resolution Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
No investments, appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Advances repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the term sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorain County Commissioners. Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have a few issues that I wish to discuss with the Board. We have a couple of potential new hires at Golden Acres. Want to, once again, have a discussion on some of our ongoing negotiations. Specifically, our UAW negotiations at Job and Family Services. Potential new hire at Job and Family Services also. All of those subjects are allowable for executive session discussion. So I request that we can, at the conclusion of regular Board meetings today, we go into executive session to talk about those things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved way of the reading of the same for the County Commissioners Meeting Minutes of August 18, 2010?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorized supplement of a certain sublease amendment of a certain agreement of lease with Catholic Healthcare Partners and its affiliated connection with release of certain properties.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorized publication of the county website, legal notice and disclaimer.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Authorized Purchase Service Agreement with Child Care Resource Center Lorain to provide certification training for type B child daycare providers for state fiscal year 11 and the amount now to exceed 30,350 effective September 1st through June 30, 2011. And authorized director to execute amendment for changes in programming on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors, approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under transit, accept the Tiger Two Grant for West Shore Community Rail.
Commissioners, I'm happy to report that we have received verification of our Tiger Two Grants. We accumulated $65,000 in match money, $45,000 from the county's Transportation Improvement District, $15,000 from Lorain County Community Alliance, and $5,000 committed by Brian Cummins, Cleveland City Council, on behalf of Cleveland City Council. That netted us, according to my figures, a request of $325,000. Great team put this together and it was really great working with all these people, including Mr. Cordez's very efficient administrative assistant, Danny Strozak. So I would move for approval.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Point the technical committee members for the West Shore Community Rail Task Force effective August 25th. Mayor Beth Feek and Beth Long, Greater Cleveland RTA, John Molto, alternate from Melinda Bartizol, ODOT District 12, Valerie Kilmore, ODOT District 3, Carrie Handy, Sandusky Transit System, Steve Poggiulali, Erie Regional Planning Commission, County MPO, Steve Jones and Sarah Meyer, Nuwaka, Jason McDonald, Lorain County Community Development.
And these people are asked to be in place for tomorrow's kickoff of the Phase One Transportation Kickoff Meeting at 9:00 AM here in the County Administration Building and I will so move.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Minister?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Couple items that I need that came in late, Commissioners, and I'll pass some information on to you. Because our schedule's a little bit different, we're, we're running a little behind on getting some things on the agenda. A couple of resolutions for private owner rehab for the CHIP program that was sent down. I'd like to get a resolution. There's a copy there for Madam Clerk, too, if you pass them all down. If she could take a look at that resolution. I have two of those, another one is coming your way. It's pretty standard procedure with our CHIP program. We're trying to exhaust our funds as quickly as possible so that we have a successful program here. I'd ask that you would take a look at that and then, Madam Clerk, read the resolution and for your consideration.
I know this Burzely Road sounds awfully familiar. Is this one that came through before?
A couple of them got sent back for, for rework. So it could be that we, we have seen that before and have not expended any funds on it.
I'm guessing, is that the one that was like six acres?
What happened was that the contractor on this backed out. So we're amending that resolution in order to get the new contractor on the job.
Thank you.
Which I believe I voted no in the past and I'll vote no again, but it's up to my Commissioners.
Well, you want me to read the first one?
Go ahead, but which is the first one? I've got two.
I'm going to do J.A. Kilby.
Okay, good.
Were contracted J.A. Kilby Enterprises, North Ridgeville, in the amount of $32,890, which includes 10% contingency for any unforeseen change orders on behalf of Marilyn Schneider at 10088 Valley View Drive, Columbia Station, in order to receive assistance from fiscal year '08 CHIP Home Private Owner Rehab. Okay. I don't know what she's getting done, though. Pardon me? Are you talking to yourself?
Renovations to her structure.
Well, it looks like it's just a 10% contingency. We've already approved the first, they must need a contingency amount.
No, we're approving the whole contract.
I think...
J.A. Kilby is the whole contract, which the total amount includes your 10% contingency on any, all of these contracts.
Can we wait until after executive session? Because I know I don't think I've ever seen this one. I'd like to look it up before I make a decision on it. And the second one I know, I, I'm not in favor of, but I don't know about the first. Can we wait on this?
Pleasure, pleasure to the Board.
Okay. If you don't mind.
No, we can do that. That way it'll be a little bit more orderly.
And then the second one, award contract. Well, we're actually going to amend Resolution 10278 adopted April 21st, which awarded contract to Papis Construction, Inc. And we are now going to award a contract to Baxter Roofing and Construction for Martha Barletta at 46576 Burzely Road, Wellington, for renovations to her instructors. 14 invitations were sent out to receive. And this would be in the total amount of $38,499, which includes the contingency.
Okay, I'll move for approval on that one.
I'll second that one also.
Any further discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
No.
Okay, then, are you going to go to the next one? There was another...
That was it.
I don't have any more.
Those two.
Were they two different things?
We're going to wait for this one till after exec.
Well, that was the first one, but what about the roof replacement?
Right there, the roof replacement.
Did you get roof?
Oh, I didn't get that one.
I only have two pieces of paper here.
Oh. Here's, here you go.
You kept keeping all those papers.
What's up?
Okay. Award various contract to homeowners to receive grant assistance from CDBG-FY09 Home Repair. One is to J.A. Kilby Enterprises, North Ridgeville, in the amount of $5,550 for Robert and Stephanie Kish at 12231 Eane Boulevard, Grafton, for roof replacement. Eight invitations were, two received. Larry's Roofing and Remodeling, Overland, for total amount of $6,820 for Heather and Bradley, Steve Anis at 220 Southwood Drive, Carlisle, for roof replacement. 15 bids went out, four received. And J.A. Kilby Enterprises, North Ridgeville, in the amount of $5,000, oh no, $5,610 for Shannon and Kelly McPherson at 2048 Harrison Avenue, Sheffield Township, for roof replacement. 15 invitations went out, four received. These will pay from the home repair account and all have a contingency.
Okay, I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Okay. Then that leaves one outstanding and you're going to check on that, Laurie? And then we're going to vote on that after our executive session.
Correct.
Okay.
I apologize to the Board for presenting this without a time to look it over too, too well. We're trying to get all those grants in line and all that CHIP funding and, you know, quite frankly, the state was giving us such a bad time on all of this stuff that I'm really glad that we're getting it all corrected and we're pushing timeframes. The other, another issue was, Commissioner Kayla, you spoke to me on a solid waste grant.
Oh, the one from last year, yes.
And after tracking through that, we went back and we had set aside a portion of the discretionary funding prior to working at the Collection Center and using the discretionary funding for the Collection Center for, for a grant that had been approved, but the recipient was still waiting on their match money.
Correct. Norwood School's been able to achieve a $10,800 match and we had the $10,000.
On a grant.
Right.
That money was set aside. In fact, we pulled up the emails instructing Dan Bilman of Solid Waste to earmark that money before we used it towards the Collection Center. So that's still available should you decide to move forward on that grant request that you spoke to me with. Regarding, I think you guys were going to want to approve it last year. But that's the information you asked me to get and I have received it.
No, just Norwood School in Sheffield Lake on a new playground. Approximately $21,000 project. They were out raising $10,880, if I recall the right numbers, with us doing a $10,000 match. And we put that as a set aside a year ago. And now they're ready because they've got their money. So I'd like to make a motion to award the $10,000 grant to, I believe it's Norwood School slash something else, the paperwork I gave to somebody.
I'll second the paperwork you gave to somebody.
Okay, that's where the intent is, where to go, so.
As long as it's been set aside, that's what it was for.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
For Commissioner Kokoski.
Yes.
Goodwill!
After driving, no pun intended, through the issues, the two buses that Goodwill was interested in, which are the high-top vans that are handicapped equipped, we have been granted the authority from the FTA to deplete those. And therefore, we can move those two vans any way we see fit. Whether we do an agreement with Goodwill or we do a sale or how we handle it is now up to us. The two vans that they were interested in are number 06-249 and 06-250. 249 has 150,000 miles on it and 250 has 173,000. While they're depleted on their FTA guidelines, we routinely run those up to over 300,000. They're diesel-equipped and we've used them for our paratransit support. So they're at your disposal right now. And remember, a week or two ago, I told you we had to go through all those guidelines with the FTA.
With maintenance and things, we don't have to worry about any of that?
No. The, the, the FTA is out of it now.
Good.
Took a little while, but everything is now lined up correctly for whatever collaboration you would like to do on, on behalf of the Board.
We can donate? Can we donate?
It's my understanding that we can donate. You can donate, you can sell, you can lease.
I would make a motion that we donate those two buses. You know, they are providing a service that we can't accommodate because of funding issues and it's not any money out of our pocket and it's going to help our residents. So those most in need. So I would make a motion to donate both of those buses to Goodwill for that purpose.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to amend, as long as they're providing the service that they attend to us. And I don't have a problem donating it to them. If they discontinue, if they discontinue the service they're going to be providing, then the buses should come back to us.
Why don't we, why don't we make a recommendation to the Board to accomplish both goals? First, I'm glad we're looking at donating them because I don't want to have extended liability on their lease agreement and so that if there's any problems, we don't get hit for deep pockets on liability. Why don't we donate the buses but prepare it under an MOU that we can recover the, the buses should they not be used for a pre-agreed-upon list of, of events and, and outcomes? And we can get with Goodwill and, and draft it up pretty quick. The, although I'm not sure, you know, given the age of the buses and the amount of miles, once they start using them, we'll want them back. I can understand generally what Commissioner Kayla's intent is.
Well, the intent being that they'll continue the service if they can no longer continue the type of service they're offering. We may need to take those back, give them to another organization who's offering to provide those same services.
That's fine. The other, the other thing is...
I'm not worried about Goodwill in the least. I just want to make sure we continue the service out there that's being proposed.
The other issue is that we're starting to see a couple requests now from all over the county for buses. Let me make this clear, we don't have a, a deep reserve of, of...
Giveaways.
Yeah, of, of vehicles that, that can be given away. We have other vehicle, we have about 11 of these type of vehicles and we have six or seven in service and we use the other ones, rotating them in and out of service. The Green County buses were pretty depleted when we received them. We still have those and those are out by the airport. So we're not, all these requests that we're starting to see from a lot of nonprofits and other good organizations, we really can't consider those. This, this is a, a unique collaboration.
This is unique, correct.
And I just want to caution the Board that we're starting to see some of those things come through. It's, I don't blame them, time's a type, as soon as you creak open the door, everybody wants something. And, and so we need to be prepared to say thank you, but no thank you on a couple of those issues. But I'll, I'll carry out these objectives and Commissioner, if you would like to inform Goodwill of the good news. I don't know if you did, I talked to you yesterday, but...
No, I didn't tell them yet.
Thank you. So a motion?
Madam Clerk?
How is the motion reading, please?
We're basically going to enter an MOU with Goodwill Industries to donate their two buses for them to provide the service to Lorain County residents and it's so timed with a predetermined list of criterias to be met.
Okay, call the law, please, yeah, as long as that's established.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioners, I'm, I'm, just sorry it took so long, just had to go up and down the FTA chain of command. Friday, it was either Thursday afternoon or Friday, I was notified that Fitcher's Rating Agency, which is the big rating agency that handles all the port authorities in Ohio, which rule ratings on all port authorities.
Withdrew.
Withdrew. Essentially, pretty much putting the port authorities out of business as an economic development tool for doing financing on projects. I'm not really sure where that leaves us right now with our port authority. It wasn't anything that was caused by Lorain County's Port Authority. All our issuance were 100% guaranteed. But there were some issues with other port authorities and it had to do with, I believe, some of the financials and the deals they did. I, I'm not really sure, I haven't sorted through it all yet and I'm waiting on further guidance that Moody's going to issue, other than the, the one pager that indicated that they're no longer going to issue rating and withdrawing the rating on, on what's been done already on the port authorities.
So does that mean that we can't be a conduit for funding for different projects? Or what exactly does that mean?
Well, the conduit bonds will still be fine. Well, the conduit bonds will still be fine. In fact, one of the things is next, next week, we need to get down to the state because we're doing, we're trying to do some recovery bonds for a big expansion project somewhere in the county, and I really can't go over that right now. We gave up our recovery bond allocation because we didn't have any takers, and then they extended a little bit, and then we got another big taker came in, so we had to reapply for an additional allocation from the pool we gave our allocation to back, back to. So we're going to probably be in Columbus on Tuesday making our case to get those recovery bonds allocation back and support this project. There'll be more to follow on that if it goes through. The economic development conduit bonds, the hospital bonds, et cetera, we can still continue to do those, and those are rated differently because we're merely a conduit for tax-exempt purposes. The, the problem comes in on those deals that need long-term financing. Commissioner Kayle was pretty aware of this as a businessman. Most of the, most of the financing's short-term, and, and we'd off, we offered an alternative of long-term, stable financing. We were doing real well until the economy collapsed, and we lost about six deals that were in the queue. But we still were working at making it a very vital, vital organization in our mosaic of incentives that we have for businesses. I, I don't know where that leaves it. We're, we're gonna have to sit down and huddle up. Now, to complicate that issue even further, we've had a decade-long relationship with, with a underwriter that was first with Season Good and then obviously Capital Markets, and for reasons I'm not really completely sure of yet, they have severed that relationship, and we're now orphaned out there at a pretty crucial time for what we're doing. So not only has Fitcher's pulled the rating, but the person that set up the port authority with us a decade ago and has been with us the whole decade is now not available to us. And we have the issue of National Bronson out there. We have the pulled rating from Fitcher's. We're, we're looking at a, a, doing one of the biggest bond issuances that we've ever done in Lorraine County, absent the Justice Center at a crucial time in our fiscal health, and we've lost the person we've been working with for a decade.
Can I make a recommendation? Do you know Don Hart? I think you've met with him before. Maybe we can bring him in.
Well, I, again, it's not who comes in, it's the history and the archival knowledge and the, the, the things that we've done. A good part of the rating presentation, everybody thinks it's about numbers with the underwriter, with the rating agencies. It's really not about numbers. They get the numbers. They can read the numbers. We send them the CAFR, we send them all of our, our analysis, and they go through it, and they're experts at that. It's very easy to understand. It's the story. It's what happened, what's gonna happen, what may happen, what may the board do, what, what's their, what's their thinking, what, what's some of their authorities, and will they exercise those authorities, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, there's a decade we've been doing this, and the last time we were there, three years ago, it was actually about two years ago. You know, we were painting an optimistic picture for them with, we were placing a sales tax. Excuse me, implementing one and then sending it to the voters, and we were hopeful. It's, it's, we have to spell it all out for them, and staying with the same, same person, the firm, gives you that, that knowledge and with those rating folks. We were gonna do the refi on the Justice Center, that's out there. We were going to look at refiring some sewer bonds, that's out there. We were also looking at bonding the Marks Road Sewer Project and also gaining some additional either notes or rolling into part of the bond for that increase in the road projects, road construction project with Engineer Carney. All of this is sitting now and needs to be evaluated for where we go. We still need to do some of this stuff, but we need to take a step back and recollect ourselves on, on moving forward so that we have a good game plan. It's gonna be a tough rating presentation to Moody and Fitcher's for the county this time around. There's, there's no doubt that the, the confidence level has slipped, remembering that the last time we were able to gain a watch status from Moody and then negative outlook from, from Fitcher's, but we didn't see a lot of downturn in our rating.
Well, if Fitcher's withdrawn, we don't care what they have to say.
Port authorities.
Well, but, okay, but you know what? We don't care what they say because they're no good anymore.
Okay, Betty, here's how this works. It's not a matter of what we.
Between port authority, we have no choice. Fitch and Moody's have to rate us and run any ability to bond out anything.
What about the line of credit that we've been keeping up? Are we not gonna need that any longer then, since we can't, if they're not rated?
I'm, I'm backing up and taking a look and seeing where we need to punt to. So before we, for the, the port authority does anything, we, we, we need to let the dust settle. I wanna see what the other bigger port authorities are going to do because they're much more robust and active than we are. And, and then we need to come up with a game plan. I just need to let you know because.
Thank you for the good news.
What was the thing that you always always say? Bad news, county administrator, good news, board of commissioners?
That's right.
Well, I'm giving you the bad news.
That's my, that's my.
But you know what? I, I know that things are not as, as good as they could be, but you know what? I don't think we're so bad off in view of everything else that's going on all around. You've done a very good job of keeping us afloat. You won't let us spend any money, but besides that, we're, we're not doing so bad.
Well, I appreciate your confidence, Commissioner. It's just that you really need to be aware of these, of these things.
But I'm not paying any attention.
Yeah, well, I understand that.
Yeah.
But, you know, we've, we've, we've lost something that was very important, and there's, there's a lot of money at stake with the port authority. There's a two and a half million dollar bond reserve. So you have to be aware of that. And the other thing was.
Whose concept was that to begin with? Don't you be preaching to me, friend.
The other, the other, the other aspect is with, with Fitcher's. In order, Fitcher's and Moody has to rate our paper in order for anybody to buy it. And if they don't rate the paper, well, it costs us more money. And we were looking for savings on the refi in the Justice Center around nine hundred thousand dollars. The rating presentation and the, the rating that comes thereafter is, is critical to gaining any of that savings. So right now, I put everything on hold and probably gonna be coming to you, maybe even after the executive session, I'm looking for some language right now, or no later than next week to at least re, re, re-note the Marks Road Project. Because those are coming up and they are gonna expire, and then to seek notes for the, for the road improvement, which will give us a few weeks' breathing room on the other two bond refinances until we can collect ourselves and figure out what we need to do moving forward. You look.
Is that why you're retiring, Ron?
Is there any, any questions right now on the board? I just, I just felt that we need to have this update.
Well, thank you for that.
And this was all breaking Thursday and Friday.
You know, that's, it's not good news, but we can do it.
It's not terrible. It's just that we were talking about, you know, aggressively moving ahead just two weeks ago, and, and the landscape has changed again.
And, and it can change again.
Let's hope not, because there's not too much landscape left. The, the ground's pretty shaky.
Wear your hip boots.
And for my, my coworker, Ron Twining, we've been together almost eleven years. I couldn't ask for a better partner, first in community development and down as Assistant County Administrator. I held my breath until I was blue, until they allowed me to offer you that position down in, from Economic Development, and it was a good collaboration. All the years and all the places I've worked, I've never worked with a finer partner. And I personally am gonna miss you, and it's not just for the pretzels you bring me, Ron. But I think folks need to know that. I, I've been on a lot of teams, but our team was a good one, and it's gonna be hard to replace, and it's gonna be missed. Thank you very much for the last eleven years, Ron. That's all the comments I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cordes. Mr. Ennis?
Commissioners, there are two matters of pending litigation that I would like to discuss with the Commissioners in executive session. And, you know, with respect to Mr. Twining, I also would like to extend my deepest appreciation. And thanks to Ron for not only being a, an excellent coworker, but a very good friend. My dad used to tell me that you're lucky if during your lifetime you meet a handful of people that you, that are of such character that you can count on calling them in the middle of the night, and they will get out of bed and come in and help you in an emergency, and I count you as one of those people, Ron. I'm not sure if it's because you're of such character or you are such a character, but you're like that, but sleep lightly, because I, I may need you.
He's changing his phone number. Okay, Commissioner Lori?
Well, everyone knows this was fair weekend. You attended the breakfast, and Sherry and I walked around all day, and it was a beautiful day at the fair. Actually, went back home and came back and went and saw Charlie Daniels Band at night for the concert, and that was really good, too. Ron, I'm gonna miss you. You were my go-to guy. I knew if I went to you, whatever I needed done was gonna get done, and I'm, I'm truly gonna miss you. We received a email from the Ohio Attorney General, which is good news for some veterans. It says eligible veterans who served in the Persian Gulf, Iraq or Afghanistan wars may receive one hundred dollars for each month of active duty service, up to one thousand dollars. Eligible veterans serving on active duty elsewhere in the world during these wars may receive fifty dollars per month of service, up to a maximum of five hundred dollars. An eligible veteran may combine their service bonuses for a maximum payment of fifteen hundred dollars. And family members of deceased veterans may also be eligible for this compensation. Any veterans that qualify will need to download the application, and that is at W W W dot veteransbonus dot ohio dot gov. And that's the end of my report.
Yeah, fair week. Monday was very nice. I couldn't make the breakfast, had another commitment. Also, Ron, gonna miss you. One of the best tires I ever had. But also, I need your new cell phone number, and I want your Rolodex.
You had two hires, Tony and I.
Yeah, you and Tony. But your new cell number, because I always enjoyed talking to you, and can I have your Rolodex? I figure I'll get yours now and get Betty's at the end of the year, and I'll be able to reach everybody you guys call, so. Thank you, Ron.
At NOAACA's Transportation Advisory Committee meeting on Friday, they gave a handout about the twenty-ten track projects being available for the NOAACA region, and the number one project, I think, is the Overpass in Wellington. And it's a sixteen million dollar project. It's being applied for by the Village of Wellington and O dot three.
Excuse me, Betty, Underpass. It's the Underpass, correct, Ron?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, what do I know? I know what I said. I thought it's going over. It's under, it, it, it just goes. I'm trying to read my notes, some of which are shorthand. Anyway, the projects are now being scored by track, and State Route fifty-eight could be the, on the Priority One list. At any rate, the track public hearing, no, excuse me, the application review and scoring goes from August second to September fifteenth. And then the rest of the schedule goes with that. So maybe this will finally give them an opportunity to get the money they need to do that project, which has been long in the planning. The other thing I want to just re-mention is the September twenty-ninth Jet Express commuter rail fundraiser that is being sponsored by the Alliance. We have tickets available and invite anybody who's interested in helping us meet our commitment that we made to the, the Tiger Two grant. Purchase a ticket. I left some flyers in the back, and you're talking again. Well, I'm talking, and that's not nice. You ought to be sorry. I want you to.
Ted did it.
Yeah, I told you. You do it to me all the time.
Maybe that means you're talking too much.
I don't talk as much as he does.
You're right. We talk when he's talking also.
Well, next time I'm gonna get my ruler. Anyway, I want you to come. And our entertainment, I left it. I, I, see my purse. Our entertainment, I'm not gonna stop until you stop. I'll just keep talking. I can do it. Our entertainment that night is the crooners, and this is a Lorraine County grown group, and they're really good, so come and join us. Thank you. They're gonna pay for that. Yes.
I will truly miss you, Ron. It will be quiet down that hallway there.
Cake was at ten thirty, and it's now eleven, and they're gonna blame me for talking.
Board correspondent?
I move the reading be way.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Amen.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody from the public who wants to talk, they'll probably holler at you, too.
Yeah.
I move you going to executive session for the purposes outlined by the county administrator and our assistant county prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Thank you for your attendance.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine thirty at the Administration Building, two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at W W W dot lorrainecounty dot U S. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
In seventeen eighty-seven, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In eighteen oh three, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present eighty-eight, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until eighteen ten, the area was split between Giaga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in eighteen twenty-two, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial. And although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships. In eighteen oh seven, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in eighteen oh seven, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which twenty years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston and the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in eighteen seventy-four. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In eighteen ninety-four, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In eighteen thirteen, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by eighteen eighty known as Fields Corners and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In eighteen ten, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in eighteen thirteen, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in eighteen twenty-three, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in eighteen eleven to the Beaver Creek. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in 1811 to the Beaver Creek. By 1815, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskyville, today the intersection of Roots 58 and 113, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By 1836, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in 1873, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In 1909, the US Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In 1917, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's 21 townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In 1814, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in 1911, with the remainder of the township becoming the Village of Avon in 1917. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in 1815 and 16. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until 1824, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the 1822 reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County, and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake, and the south, the Village of Sheffield. In 1816, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range 19. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding "helm" to his family name. Like the old Saxon "ham," the suffix meant "home." The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July 4th, 1817. The Village of Brownhelm Mills, located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow, was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rawson in 1816. Ten years later, the Rawsons were forced to build a grist mill, or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village, the locals called Rawsonville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In 1877, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rawsonville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Aleria Township, Carlisle was settled in 1816 by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in 1822, Carlisle Township became its own entity. LaPorte developed as the township village, with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In 1840, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over 10,000 acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Aleria, and the city, which also bears his family name. In 1817, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed, and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets, and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the 20th century. In 1822, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorraine County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Aleria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base, as well as the center of government for Lorraine County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero French General Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation, and in the winter of 1817 moved from New York State to the 160 acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton, and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in 1827. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in 1818, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling, or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace, and in fact, was the nation's leader in cheese production from 1870 to 1900. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, "The Spirit of Seventy-Six." In 1818, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by 1822, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In 1824, when Lorraine County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township, that had been first settled in 1818, requested detachment from Black River Township in 1825. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in 1833, and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only co-ed, but also multiracial, and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in 1992, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In 1820, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of 1818. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of 1825. The first religious service was held in 1826, and the first school was in session in the summer of 1829. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorraine County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of 1820, Abner Loveland Jr. became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Sr. had arrived, and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of 1823, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorraine County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in 1813, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of 1812. By 1820, the land was surveyed, and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of 1821. By 1831, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporate a township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. LaGrange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of 1825, established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of 1826, 14 more settlers had arrived. The name LaGrange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In 1827, the area was separated from Carlisle Township, and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of LaGrange. By 1875, the center had grown into a village, also incorporated as LaGrange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcock's, who built the first frame house in 1833. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In 1835, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners, and the first elections held in April of 1836. When the first post office was established in 1835, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In 1852, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed, as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in 1891. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized, or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of 1832 to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by 1835, the commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of 1836. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By 1880, close to 700 citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester Center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club,
Pedestrian injuries represent the second-largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings. Children aren't educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and, obviously, stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education, or they hadn't had any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and do something about it.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to 4. Teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4. Part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely, and we're quite happy to announce
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets. We have actual working stoplights. We have the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work. We have operational railroad crossings. We also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations, so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children, when you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60, and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know, does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say, "left, right, left, behind you, in front of you," once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us, and we even had one child that came up to us and said, "You know what, Ms. Spansky? We were going to cross the street the other day, and we remembered, look left, look right, look left." So that was very rewarding. And so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light, and then our railroad crossing signals actually work, so they're just like, "Oh!" And we get up there and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions, you know, we'll say, "Well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it? Because you're fast and I'm fast, and we can run." And of course, they're very enthusiastic, and "No, we shouldn't do this." So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks, and just because one goes by and the signal stops, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks, and they wait till those signals stop, and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways, and they should never run across the railroad tracks, they should walk and continue to look both ways, because it's not safe, and they could fall, they could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone. It could be very dangerous, because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming, because they are so small. And as you know, some of those tracks are very large, and you're talking in kindergarten through 4th grade, some of those children are very small children. The main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision. So make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of- of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous. And the same thing with trains. We tell them that train could take forever. It's way down there, but we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use two different videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and first grade, and that is "Otto the Otto", put out by AAA.
Hi, kids! A lot of times, you have to walk to get to places. And when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no! Those kids are walking the wrong way! That's dangerous! I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first and don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat.
Who's right, Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without looking.
The second video, we show second, third, and fourth grade. And it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda, and they developed the first humanoid robot.
Hey, Asimo.
What's up, Asimo? How's it going?
Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo.
How come you're dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Step in Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming.
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this. They relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Otto, who is an animated automobile. And he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing, and he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross, because a lot of children at schools have parked cars. He goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So they both cover the basic skills. One is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups. Our response has been amazing, not only from the children. We have received numerous cards. We have, I have a whole box of thank yous from children from the schools that where we have, that have participated in our workshop. We've had nothing but a positive response back throughout the communities that we've visited this year.
I think it was really nice because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety, and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
I saw that we could, like, know what to do when there's like cars coming, not to go in the middle of the road so you don't get hurt. You have to look left, right, left, behind the shoulder, and then straight.
If they don't know how to stop at sidewalks, then I'll tell them how to. If they don't know how to cross with the outside of the box, then I'll tell them how to do that, too, because that's what we learned.
I think that it was good because I didn't know that you had to look five ways, which were left, right, left, and then over your shoulder, and then ahead of you.
I thought that crossing the road was really good for little kids if they don't know what to do by crossing the road.
It's a good idea because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection. What happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars? Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to Safety Town and they learn "look left, look right, look left again", and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did Safety Town,